Good to go. You hear us now?
Yep.
All right, we're good. All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting in Buckfield Select Board to Order for August 19th, 2025 at 6:34 PM. We do have a quorum here tonight. Old business, the old church on the hill, sale and lease planning discussion and public input.
Did we receive any public comment?
I have not received any. I don't know if any of you have. Let me go see. My apologies.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah, we have an open seat.
One of you could be a slot.
Form was up to the left.
The papers are right in the office. I can have them. So none of us have received?
I have not. Nothing, no.
Okay. I think we can. And at this point, we the old church on the hill committee is it's kind of non-existent at this point?
There's only two members, so they can't form a quorum.
Even one of those individuals reached out about this topic?
Not that I am privy to. Maybe once he gets the town clerk emails, because that's where it was.
My apologies. She thought it was sent to both of us, so she filed it into her folder and.
Thank you.
So this email is from you, Ashley. Are you, have you been in the old church? Are you familiar with the condition of the church?
I have everything that I found on.
Gotcha, yeah.
From not to a rock, but it's meat bar or apparel.
Yeah.
The two big pieces are.
One outlet.
There really isn't electricity and there is no plumbing. There's no water and no, I mean, not that that seems remarkable, but. This is really exciting.
Yes, this, I love it. It's very encouraging. I love this idea. Absolutely. I just want to make sure you understand the scale. Yeah, yeah.
Um, but depending on how.
Yeah. Are those documents you brought with you for us?
Um, I only have one copy.
Yeah, I mean, you can either share the physical copy or, I mean, email it to each one of us, absolutely. Or we can run over and have copies made, for sure.
The email that we've received or that you've received and forwarded, the, we was a gentleman that offered to talk to us about options and.
Yeah, I don't remember his name, from Main Preservation.
Yeah, thank you.
We can pull it up.
So for those people who are listening in or watching, we have a proposal or a draft of a proposal about using the church for sale of goods for local farmers, home settlers, a place to feature local artwork, a hobby area, so very community based. I think many people have that in mind, and this is really exciting. For those people who are watching online, I want them to know what it was that could handle.
Brad Miller from Main Preservation.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
They said that previous staff and current partners had consulted on the property over the years in an effort to ensure preservation. I have not reached back out to him. We hadn't had that discussion yet.
But it sounds like this organization has experience with this and offers them guidance based on what has gone before with other projects in other places, things to look out for, things that we would need to take into consideration. I've seen that we did not receive any feedback from the community. Some of my thoughts are that if we can keep the building with a community member or community-based, that would be ideal. And some of the questions would be because there is that, looking at that stipulation of keeping the exterior close to the original. Should that be set up as a sale? Could that be set up in a sale agreement or a lease agreement? What would that look like? The discussion personally, I might suggest that we don't look at this as an opportunity to try to make money for the town, but find the right fit to preserve the building, because it's been an expense for the town. So if we can take that burden off the town, that's really what we're looking for.
Right.
So those are some of my thoughts.
I would, I would agree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we just need to figure out how to proceed. I would think we'd have to get in touch with the attorney and figure out the best way to set this up.
These folks may have a template of a sale or a lease agreement.
Yeah.
For another property, perhaps not a church, but similar setup, so we can find the paperwork already done.
Yeah.
Now, that's great.
Yeah, I want to continue to explore this and also open up a dialogue with Brad. He can help us either with this situation or with any other if this doesn't shake out. I guess perhaps I will make the motion that we explore explore an agreement with Ashley. Am I pronouncing this right, Deshane? Okay, wonderful. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we explore an agreement with Ashley Deshane's with some assistance with Bradley, what was his last name? From Main Preservation.
Miller.
Miller. Bradley Miller from Main Preservation.
I'll second that.
Has some discussion, perhaps he could either attend or zoom into one of our next few meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, and maybe while this is like in a fundamental, like, you know, first step sort of phase, we can have a Zoom meeting with him, Ashley, members of the select board, and Cameron, just us, just to explore some initial thoughts, first steps, that sort of thing. And then bring it to a town meeting, too. Up to you guys.
Yeah, just.
You mean outside of the select board meeting?
If there, yeah, if just a couple of, like, literally a couple, two of us, Cameron, Ashley, and Brad could all sit in on like a Zoom meeting and just discuss some like rudimentary, how would this look moving forward? But it could be in a town meeting format, absolutely. Or sorry, a board meeting format, absolutely.
Yeah.
Not part of my motion, so we can do whatever.
I think the first step is seeing when he might be available.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then a big piece of that, seeing what he's got for
Yeah.
examples.
Yeah, and I assume you're amenable to that?
Okay.
Yeah. That'd be great.
That would be wonderful. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to read through it a little more thoroughly and.
Yeah.
It's exciting for us, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We love to see any ideas brewing with this project, and we're happy to help you along the way, after or not.
Yeah, that church has sat idle way too long. It's nice to see some interest in doing something.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Have you reached out to SCORE at all? SCORE, what is the?
I don't know what it says. I know what you're talking about.
So SCORE stands for something.
Yeah.
But it's a retired business folks. It's free and it's phenomenal and they help with, I've worked with them, but they were great help. So, and it's free and you can always say, oh, never mind.
Right.
But she's connected with the S P E right now.
But that may be a resource, I think, is.
Okay, great. Just somebody else that this is great.
Very thoughtful.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
My motion was to explore an agreement with Ashley in conjunction with Brad.
Is there a second?
Peter.
All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Thank you so much, Ashley. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Do you, is it your company?
Does anyone need to go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, my coffee's in share. Thank you so much for coming and listening.
Great evening.
Thank you as well.
I have a little hope.
Yeah, I'm very excited about that.
Pretty much with.
Yep.
With you.
Yeah, absolutely.
But again, for people listening, please feel free to submit your arguments or suggestions.
Absolutely.
If someone else has an interest in practicing now leasing the old church on the hill.
Yep.
Reach out, please.
All right, select board evaluations and goal setting. Still.
So I will publicly confess that in zooming around today, I did not bring the chair first to the meeting, and I apologize. I will make sure that they are with me next time. I can share that one area that we all would like to improve on is the speed at which we read and respond to emails. We all do it, but perhaps not with the efficiency
Yeah.
that would be best practice. So I'll bring all the paperwork and we can officially set our goals.
Okay.
But if we all just kept that in mind is perhaps cool for all of us.
Yes. All right.
Discussion of that at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yep, we'll table it for now, and now we understand.
Totally, yeah, completely understand. Please don't, do not feel bad. Um, make the motion, we continue slash table the select word evaluation and goal setting until our next meeting on September 2nd.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
All right, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I didn't add the public works report on there, but I threw one in there anyways. It's in your packet. Just to highlight the key things that they've been working on. Catch Basin in town. My mic off. Catch Basin.
Is that in here or you have?
Looks like this.
So it is, okay.
Yeah, after the dispersment, Lauren.
So the Catch Basin's in town. We have 12 of them. Those hadn't been cleaned out in over five years. So all those have been cleaned out. The Callister Road, we had to tear out approximately 400 feet of the road. We'd received numerous complaints about significant potholes. When we got up there, there was nothing Cold Patch was going to do to fix it. So we brought in a member of the road committee and we came up with the conclusion that it was in the best interest to take that section of road up, reditch it, grade it, and just keep an eye on it when it rains.
Okay.
Obviously, there's no money to pave it right now, but everybody that went through while they were working on it seemed to be happy, because now instead of planning in craters, they're driving on gravel, so it's a better solution to what was there. Preston and the crew are working on Brock School Road. He's going to continue that, prepping for the paving, replacing cross culverts, doing some ditching. South Hill Road, we got a lot of complaints about the visibility looking up South Hill from Heeman Road, so we had the seasonal guys go up there and knock down that overgrowth so that people can see, so it's not a hazard anymore. There was a culvert up on North Hill that had been reported to us a couple times. It was a steel culvert that had completely rotted out in the middle and created a hole in the middle of property owner's driveway, so Preston went up and replaced that this week. Loring Hill, I know when we use our mulch head, it's ugly, but unfortunately, the trees were growing into the road to the point that we'd received complaints about the trees causing damage to bigger vehicles. So the crew's up there today, they used the mulch head to cut back. It's much more open. It's just really ugly right now, because that mulch head, without destroying the teeth, leaves decks that are, but it's easier to pass now. We had a transfer station signage regarding waste oil. People continue to drop off gasoline antifreeze. We don't accept that. So there's new signs that say waste oil only and no hazardous waste accepted. The town of Buckfield and Sumner participate in the household hazardous waste program, and they can dispose of hazardous waste at the depot and most than their other events, which I published on the website and have flyers for.
Is that posted up at the transfer station as well? Is there like a cork board there or something?
Every time I put something up, it ends up blowing away or falling off, so we can put more up there, but.
Well, or just have copies perhaps to give to people who are trying to drop that stuff off or.
Sometimes what happens is people drop it off before one of our guys can get over there, and then when we're getting ready to get rid of everything, we find out, hey, there's five gallons of gasoline sitting here. I don't know if it's on purpose or if it's just legitimately an accident, but it costs us money to get rid of that stuff, because now we have to call Clean Harbors to come in and pick it up.
Yeah.
So just trying to bring more awareness to that. And then, last thing they did today that I know of was they went up the 72 Gammon Road. Property owner had spent it multiple times, called us. The bushes in front of his house were overgrown, and I know the town's gone down there and cut it before. I'm currently working on getting a list of roads for roadside mowing. I told him it would take some time, but we would get it taken care of. He said he was coming to the meeting tonight, so I just had the guys draw up what they were doing, go down and clear it, so it's not an issue. It was a quick project. It only took them a couple of minutes, but it just sucks having to pull them from one project clear across town, so. And then that's what they've been working on the last two weeks.
So there is a plan for roadside mowing, is that what we're calling?
Yep.
For roadside mowing, so if there are other people who have concerns about
We're going to do it.
roadside issues, they can reach out, but that there is a plan and
We're going to do it.
they intend to take care of it, is that correct?
We're, yes, we're going to do it in sections, so, you know, I don't want to say I want the entire town roadside mowed and then get a quote that's exorbitant. But I also want to make sure that whoever's doing it is getting a significant portion of it, you know, not just two or three feet. Some of these roads, you know, the overgrowth and the bushes that are grown up, they need to be whacked back, because you come around corners you can't see. So I put together preliminary list, which is primarily out in East Buckfield right now, because those roads, Bryant Road, Back Bryant Road, Gesner Road, Gammon Road, those roads have serious growth, overgrowth that needs to be addressed first, and then we'll go from there. But those are the ones that I, I sent off on a list to a contractor for pricing.
Thank you.
All right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
The amount on that, $112,555.21. Approval of the minutes from the August 5th, 2025 Select Board Meeting?
I will make the motion to approve the select word meeting minutes from August 5th, 2025.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Um, has the freightliner gone in yet?
It's there. I got a phone call today. Motor mounts are bad, need to be replaced. I'm waiting for an additional estimate on what that's going to cost. Once I have it, I'll send it out to you. It just doesn't make sense to have them send it back for us to fix the motor mounts, to send it back, to have them do the clutch, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
But once they got underneath it, they found some other issues, so.
Any word on the flywheel, which I definitely know what that is?
Not yet.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Municipal quitclaim deeds. Yes.
Is there a number associated with this or?
Would it be the tax map number?
It's, yeah, if you look on the agenda, the eight, the 008-003-011, that's the map lot number that we use, reference on the deed, too.
So I make a motion that we approve the municipal quitclaim deed
I will second.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I. And then I will make the motion that we approve municipal quitclaim deed 006-001-005.
I'll second that.
Further discussion on that? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
CMP pole permit on Paris Hill.
I will make the motion that we approve the CMP pole permit for
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
We're just moving across the three.
Bit of information for anybody that's listening.
So whenever CMP places a new pole, they complete a pole permit request for you guys. I don't know the specific location. What I usually look at is their diagram on the this document right here. And then I look at the distance between the poles, and it tells you feet to the center lane of the traveled way, 20 feet. So our requirement for the town is 10 feet from the shoulder, so it meets the setbacks and requirements. They just need approval so that they can go ahead and install it.
Does it impact?
Nope. They just need your approval in order to be able to do it.
All right, all those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Committee appointment?
I'll make that we appoint Mark Fox to the road committee for a three-year term.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Yes. All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I. I feel probably could have done this here in discussion. How many members?
So they have enough to hold up, they can have a quorum. Actually, no, we appointed Tim Brackett at the last meeting, too, didn't we?
Yep.
So now they have four.
A quorum and some wiggler.
Yep.
Love it.
Which one of us is the founder of the road? I think there isn't a chair, so how to schedule that first meeting?
Yeah, I'll work with town manager and we'll come up with a plan.
I think I had a conversation with one of the members who said, call a meeting, we'll show up.
Ready, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Love to hear.
They'll have to, they'll have to.
Yeah, yeah, right.
All right, fire department call pay policy.
You want me to just talk?
Yes, please.
So I had a meeting with Adam regarding fire department call pay, and I, I remember sitting and having a conversation with you, but I may be misunderstanding it. I was under the impression I was to pay them on a monthly basis. Maybe I was mistaken. Either way, Adam had talked to his department. It looks, to make everybody happy, I'm fine doing quarterly as opposed to every six months. But with that, I still want the monthly hours reported so that I can just keep track of what's going on, you know, quarterly and anticipate expenditures. So we had a discussion. We've already covered this as far as what the expectations are. What the expectations are and what needs to be done. I just figured the best way to. Make sure it's clear as day and not murky like mud is to just put it on paper. It outlines it. What's due when, what I'm supposed to do, what here is designated is supposed to do so that this can be a lot easier and. Everybody's on the same page. So I'm just looking. For you to adopt. The fire department call pay policy. So. We have it on record.
And the. Fire chief. Has read this document.
I sent him a copy of it when I finalized it. I let him know that we were discussing it tonight and he and I met in my office last week. And hashed this all out.
Okay, thank you. For the best of your knowledge. This. Pay schedule. Is. What the majority. The crew. Want.
I don't know about the specific dates. We discuss quarterly and the easiest way to do it is October to December is paid out in January, January to March is April, April to June is July.
The crew wants quarterly rather than monthly.
The crew, the crew wants six months. I don't, that's ridiculous to keep. I mean.
Right.
There are other towns, that's how they pay out.
But they would prefer quarterly over monthly.
Correct, yes.
They may want something else, but.
Right.
Given those two options, this is what, okay.
This was preferable to the monthly.
Okay.
Because some of those monthly checks may only be for $14. You know what I mean? So.
So I move that. We. Adopt the. County Buckfield Department Call Pay Policy.
I will, go ahead, Peter.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor, bye bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
And as it's a policy, it's not written in stone. So if anyone wants to make comment to any one of the select boards or members or inboxes are open.
This isn't. This stands until the select board.
Absolutely.
But if somebody. Wants to discuss changing this.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, Sandra.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. Discussion about our special amusement permit. Thought we should have some clarification because. When we last discussed it, it kind of. Went all over. We just thought that it might be best if we got some clarification through the town manager to send out letters for folks requesting such. Permits. If he wouldn't mind.
I can do that. So typically, when I get notified of things, I forward it to you guys. To you, so. I just, I just think where the permits verbiage changed, might need to just clarify it a little better.
So would you please? Write a letter. We have documentation. That. Language is clarified to anyone who holds a special amusement permit. Nothing's changing. Just make sure that it's clear.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that? All right. Other business? Want to look at the schedule? Or?
Oh, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we move the September. 16. Select board meeting to September. Monday, September 22nd.
I will second that motion. All right.
Further discussion?
There are no other. Meeting scheduled for that night, right?
I can double check real quick.
I don't believe so. Just don't forget those of you that are on the Solid Waste Committee, you have a meeting on the 23rd in Sumner.
Yes.
Yes.
That's why we're making it on Monday.
In the clear. Or the 22nd. No other meetings going on that day.
All right. All those in favor, bye bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Sandra, I.
Okay. Are there other business?
Another other business is I know that the. Community Offense Committee is working super hard to bring together Community Day.
Yay.
And they can certainly use all the help. That people can offer. You folks don't have to. It can just be a volunteer on that day to help. Wrangle the bike kids before it breaks or, you know, help set things up or, you know, whatever, whatever capacity. Folks would like to help, that would be fantastic. Any handsake like work. And I know they're working hard and. So reaching out there, please reach out to the Community Events Committee if you're on Facebook. That's a really good way to reach out to them or you certainly. Reach out to the town office and. People can connect you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they should be, or they should. Be aware, like last year, they advertised they were open until. A certain time. And then they started packing up like an hour. Before that time and people were going over there. And were really disappointed. So. You advertise you're open till certain time. You gotta stay open.
And certainly if they. I'll reach out and talk to them about that. That's.
Sure.
I am the liaison person, but. Yeah, good point. We don't want to disclaim anybody. Yes.
I get to share information to the town's Facebook page too.
And I have one other other. Today is Cameron's three-year work warranty.
What?
Here in Buckfield. Can you believe it?
It feels like just yesterday. Who talked you into this?
To change. To change him to his desk because I remember saying that would do.
Yep, that's when I started his interim. It was Lauren's last day.
Well, thanks.
Happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary. Big thank you. You're brave.
Forward to the fourth anniversary, and the fifth and the 10th.
Yeah, one of these days I'll have the cane. I remember when we hired Cameron on.
Yeah.
Goodness, I don't think you have to wait. You don't have to. Expect me to live long enough to get that cane.
Could you put in? The reminder, so next year we'll bake a cake.
Ooh. Good thinking.
No always.
Olive hater, wow.
And then just make sure you check your email. I sent off the Q4 financial report. We'll go over it next meeting. I cited some notes in there, but because I just got it to you. And I understand it's after the 20th, but at the end of the year, I have to wait for invoices and stuff for that to come up. So. I wanted to give you more than a couple of hours to review it. So. We can add that to the agenda for the next, the next meeting.
And I saw an email about an ambulance. Do we need action on that tonight?
Uh, no, because it, well, that's my decision as far as not bringing it to you because we're still waiting on one more quote. And I want you guys to have all the information, one or another. So.
Sounds good.
But to give you an overview, we're, we've got one quote for $5,000, which is fix the mechanical stuff. Fix the rocker panel. Put it back in service, but we really need to weigh this, this, this whole option of. It's got 12,000 hours on it. You know, we put 5,000 into it. Yeah, we can limp it along, but we really need to figure out what we're doing. So whether that's put a warrant article on in November. To look at new or look at our capital improvement by use, get a. Two, three years out of that until. We figure out the next plan. You know, looking at the prices that I brought to you guys at the last meeting, we're anywhere from 300,000 to 430,000 for a new ambulance. Even. I mean. Would you really want to take? I don't know. I just, it's a hard, it's gonna be a hard sell. I mean, it makes sense to go new. You've got new. But at the same time, we gotta be able to sell it to the voters and. That's a pretty big annual price tag.
The town has kicked this can down the road for a long time and we need to pick it up. And, and deal with it.
Yeah.
By the town. So.
I just, you know, there's not, there's no guarantee that we put. I mean, even the lowest bid right now is 5,000. That doesn't take care of. All the issues with the ambulance that should be taken care of since, you know, it's an emergency vehicle. The other quote was 21,000 between the bodywork and, and the mechanical. I don't know where the other one's gonna land. You put that much money into it and. The engine grenades. Yeah. Transmission goes. I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at at this point.
So we'll have all that information for the next meeting?
Assuming I get that third quote, yeah.
Okay.
So.
I mean, I would still recommend that we discuss because we'll have to discuss. Approving a warrant at the next meeting. You know, putting a warrant article out there. Asking the voters if, if they would like to, you know, finance the purchase of a new one, but. At a minimum. That's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
So that will be on the agenda?
Yeah, I've already started creating the agenda for the last, next meeting. So it's already there.
If we could also put on the agenda. Discussion about. Solar energy systems ordinance. Discussion.
Sounds great.
Yep.
That would be great.
How are you doing, Neil?
Pretty good.
You got anything for us tonight or we're just holding out for our next meeting?
Just a reminder that September 11th, we're having a meeting at the Buckfield High School Auditorium and that is to. Like Sandra wanted to get as many people in to answer questions and kind of go that route. We do have a regular meeting this coming Thursday in Sumner at the town office. Of course, any, anybody's welcome to come to that. We did start the petition process just to see where people are. So some of the petitioners will be starting to turn those in and we'll just see where those numbers fall. We did talk about. If we do withdraw or start the withdrawal process. Are we able to go through and basically figure out? The minimum that the school needs to operate and kind of what that number looks like because all, all, all the numbers that we worked on was based upon. This new school budget and the school staff and what they already had. The, the thought was brought to us about what if we just started from scratch? You know, what if we looked at the state minimum and then looked at what RSU 10 says we need? And then we kind of come in the middle and see what those numbers are. So that's another process that could take a long time, but we figure we start the petition processes to see where people stood.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to you and the committee for putting in all that work and could we get that September 11th meeting if you don't already have it up on the town calendar and on this upcoming meeting?
Yeah, it's already on the calendar.
Okay, cool.
I'll have to change the location though because I didn't put a location. So.
Okay, yeah.
Important.
People might need to know that.
Yeah, we, we did get approval from Troy that the auditorium would be open for that meeting. So.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other other business?
Other, other, other?
Yeah. No.
Good, because it'd be just as long as the new business.
All right. I'll make a motion that we adjourn at 7:20 PM. I'll second. All in favor, bye bye.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Thank you. Thank you, Neil.
Thanks, y'all.
Nice to you.
Nice to you.
Anybody else going to the?